We'll call the meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call. All members are present. Approve of the agenda. We have two additions. Seven H, approved resolution 2022-71, authorizing purchase of power cots. And seven I, approved scope of project amendment for Hickman Drive. Is there any other changes? Council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sheldon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Approve of the minutes of the August 3rd, 2022 regular meeting. You all received them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed concerning those minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 3rd meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. This brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ryan West. I live at 743 Hickman Drive in Sock Center here. The reason I'm up here tonight is you guys are going to be looking at an amendment to the Hickman Drive project in front of my residence, right there. In 2014, I think I came to the city and asked that when they were doing the project to extend or to rebuild Hickman Drive, 1,500 feet, linear feet down to the county road, that they pave 130-foot section of this road to the west of the existing pavement at Hickman Drive. This was due to some washouts and some issues. You know, I could tell the rain that came down the hill washed out one of those two-foot gully in front of my driveway, as well as to minimize the cost for the city to do that, as well as for myself and my neighbor across the road to have, you know, a nice street in front of us. This stretch is unique as there's no curb and gutter on that stretch. The concrete curb and gutter ends at the west of each of our driveways. And then when we did that, or when they did that pavement, what they did in that situation was put asphalt paving down there, and it held up really, really well. I mean, you know, the plow trucks doing an amazing job staying away from it, and it has not been torn out yet. It's also unique because it does not have city water and sewer underneath this pavement. We went into the agreement, my neighbor across the road, as well as the city, that if there was ever development to the west of our property, that we would have to most likely tear up the road at that time, put city water and sewer underneath it, and have to pay for the road essentially a second time. At this point, basically, I paid myself, as well as my neighbor, $1,862 in 2014. The city paying the remaining, $3,725. With the current development that is obviously being planned, and I'm going to the west of us, the city buying that property, I guess I don't see why tearing up a road that's eight years old for me just to have to pay for it again, potentially down the road, for a third time if there's sewer and water installed at that line. So I guess what I'm asking this evening is that you guys consider to look at this to avoid myself paying an assessment of nearly $3,000 in 2022 and that future assessment, hence the repaving sewer and water at that time, save myself some money, the city some money, not have to redo the road three times in the span of maybe 10 to 15 years, depending on when that development takes place. And that's on your agenda for later this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. We will then go on to reports and presentations. Police Department, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for July of 2022. Some of the numbers we had, we did 57 door checks, we had 302 traffic stops, we had 120 foot patrol, we did community engagements, we had 25 of them, we had 10 accidents, 22 medicals, 34 assists for persons, 12 behavioral health calls, nine harassment calls, 12 alarms, 16 welfare checks. Special details, we had 19 of them, we had nine unwanted person calls, eight motorist assist calls, four verbal disputes, 33 assists for other agencies, we wrote citations for suspended driver's licenses, eight of them, we had nine K-9 assists, 21 citizen contacts, we had 18 matter of information calls, gave out 95 speeding speed citations, 12 driving without a license, we didn't sell a license, we had six theft calls. And we were at, we're up from June, 219 calls, and compared to 2021, we're up 254 calls. We had St. Clair Lewis Days in Stearns County Fair in July, and I think everything went relatively well. It was probably the largest numbers I've seen at the St. Clair Lewis Days that we've had in a long time, and at the fair, I believe. So both of them, we didn't have many calls, so it went pretty well. Unfortunately, we had to shut down the parade, which I felt bad about, but the timing of the rain, which I think is a jinx because I've got to do it three times now.
[laughter]
I don't remember it ever happening, so. Yeah, otherwise, with all the crowds we had in town for both events, I think everything went relatively well, and I think we were able to keep up with calls, so it seemed to work pretty well.
Okay.
So I'm not sure of any other complaints that we had during those events, but I don't know, maybe. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Any comments?
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
[inaudible]
I'm Ben. Public Works Department, Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Over the past month here at the Interpretive Center project, we did cover the middle lot with black dirt, and we built a small connection road to help with some traffic in that area by Caribou Coffee and Taco Bell, mowed off some of the storm ponds, asphalt patching. We worked on the Pine and Birch Street areas that were in need of some larger repairs. At the arena, we sealed the vertical expansion joints on the south end of the building in preparation for the mural to be painted. The Art Lab group plans to get the mural painted this fall. They did receive a grant for that that has to be used up this year yet. Ring Tech has also been at the arena a couple times this past month, working on the compressor system that we had some leaks on. All the leaks are now fixed, so we're just keeping everything under pressure to make sure that that stays that way before we put the refrigerant back in the system. So that'll happen sometime in September before we do an initial startup. Tree trimming took place around street signs and any that were in the right of way. Sidewalk inspections, we've answered a lot of questions from residents about their sidewalk notices. They have until the end of this month to complete their repair. If it's not completed by then, then the contractor is scheduled to start the repairs in early September, and he'd probably be here for a week and a half once he gets going to get all those done. Our 2012 Freightliner was finally repaired this past month. It had been in the shop since April, waiting for some axle parts. And then our 2009 International had a broken spring, which was repaired this month. These two repairs were pretty substantial and are going to take a large hit on our maintenance budget, unfortunately. We're working to control some weed issues on city property. Both mechanical and chemical controls are being used on those. Made some repairs at the dog park. The boat landing, the new concrete planks are going to come next week, and then tentatively the last week of August is when they're going to be installed. So that'll be done after the parking lot is milled off. Splash pad, we rebuilt the filter pump. Otherwise, we really haven't had too many issues this past month. We do plan on keeping it open through Labor Day, likely the weekend after that. It'll stay open, and then we just watch the forecast after that and see what it looks like. It doesn't pay to keep it open if it's only nice one every 10 days because that filter pump runs continuously. And then we completed some trail work on East River Boulevard, installed a new culvert to direct stormwater towards the storm pond and away from somebody's yard or fence. We hauled in level of the black dirt and seeded and installed the erosion blanket and all that, so. Any questions?
Ben, Chad at the dry cleaners there was asking about the quote for the sidewalk. If you get a chance, can you talk to him about that?
Chad?
Chad, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, thank you. He thought it was kind of high compared to other businesses in the area, and I said, well, I'll address it to you.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Ben.
Other questions?
With that boat launch, how long do you anticipate? Do they have any estimation on how long it'll?
It should be a day project. We shut down for the day and then back up and running after that.
Any other comments? Good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ambulance Department, Tim?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second quarter report for the ambulance service. We had a total of 226 total calls this quarter, which brought our yearly total up to 434 total calls. We built out 169 of them. We had 57 no votes or canceled, and Kathy included a list on her report. We had 57 total transfers to various hospitals throughout the state and North Dakota. Forty-one were BLS transfers and 16 were ALS transfers. We did not do any special details that quarter, which is April through June. Special details really ramp up in July and August. And we had no mutual aid in that quarter. We did have one return trip from the hospital to a private residence that we built out to the hospital. And that concludes the report. Is there any questions?
Questions? Concerns?
Well, I do have a question. So I see we have something on later for EMT advancement, which leads me to the question, how are you guys doing on staff? Are you up to where you need to be?
The rest of the country, we're struggling.
Yeah.
We're holding our head above water, but, you know, we're going to have hopefully a class in September.
Okay.
And we have one student that completed her training, so she's waiting to get tested. So we're doing all right. I was going to say we're super understaffed, but we're doing all right.
Sure. So people are interested in that class, they can probably get ahold of the?
Definitely. Get ahold of us before the end of the month, I think, is the close of applications. So the class will start middle of September, I believe.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Commission Report, Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have a copy of the Planning Commission Agenda. We did have one public hearing at that meeting for variance, which is an action item later on your agenda. And we also had the unfinished business, which is a ordinance for a one-year moratorium on short-term rentals, and that's an action item later on your agenda. The month of July, we did 21 building permits with a total construction value of 1.4 million. July of 2021, we did 13 permits with $168,000 in construction value. So any questions for me?
Questions? Concerns? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
City Engineer Report, Chuck.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Project updates for the 2022 cap improvements project. Next week, we will be starting the reclaiming on Phase Three, likely Monday or Tuesday. So you will see that out there. And then we'll be hopefully starting the street work on Phase Two and restoration work on Phase One very soon. Could be this week, could be next week. As soon as Kramer subcontractor gets done another project, they'll be coming here to work on both of those. And then the concrete subcontractor, French Lake, is scheduled to come at the end of August to start on remaining concrete work on Phase One and concrete work on Phase Two, sidewalk, curb and gutter, driveways, then also do the concrete work on Phase Three as well. For, we also are beginning to coordinate with the bus company, because obviously school is getting near, so we'll likely invite John to one of our meetings and coordinate all that with him, as there'll be some disruption with Hickman Drive in Phase Two as well. For the industrial park, utilities are nearly completed. They're finishing on some lift station and storm utilities. The streets, if you've seen, they've been cut and upgraded to subgrade level, so it's looking nice, and we're anxiously waiting to hear on the schedule for the remaining street work, when they can get it classified and curb and gutter and concrete subcontractors can come out and restoration. We also are working on getting the sidewalk area in front of City Hall surveyed. We're working with city staff on that. I think that's all I got for those three projects, so.
Okay. Any questions? Concerns?
Okay.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks.
We'll move on to action items. Seven A, approve EMT advancement.
So the ambulance director, Kathy Struford, has requested that Aaron Felton be removed from probationary status and be advanced to EMTB Level Three. He served on the service for nine years prior to moving out of state, hence the Level Three status. He was rehired upon his return. He has completed a new probationary period, and we're recommending that he be advanced effective August 15th.
Questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion to advance Aaron Felton to EMTB?
Sorry.
That's fine. Motion by Sheldon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Joe seconded it. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Seven B, approve resolution 2022-69, authorizing lot split.
Kay Boening has submitted an application for a minor subdivision of property located at 624 Hickman Drive. The subdivision, if approved, would divide one lot into two conforming lots. And you can see, I gave you the aerial picture, I also gave you a copy of the survey, so you can see how that's going to lay out. Her current property has 207.81 feet of frontage on Hickman. After subdivision, there will be 125-foot lot and 182-foot lot. Water and sewer service are stubbed to both properties. Both properties will meet the minimum zoning requirements for R1 Lake Shore. So although it is one big lot, there is a sewer and water stub already in place for the second lot, because it was all planned many, many years ago that this would sometime happen. So this minor subdivision is in front of you, resolution 2022-69, granting that lot split.
Questions? Comments? Does everybody understand where this is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2022-69?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Seven C, approve ordinance 814, implementing moratorium on short-term rentals.
At the Planning Commission meeting on August 10th, the staff asked Planning Commission to recommend to the city council the adoption of an ordinance establishing a one-year moratorium on short-term rentals within the city. This proposed ordinance would allow staff and the commission and the council, one year to prepare an ordinance regarding short-term rentals. The Planning Commission voted to recommend this moratorium, which is in front of you, as ordinance 814. It does not have to last a year. It could be done as early as September, it might be December, we're not certain yet. We just need to coordinate with the county because there's some areas of short-term rentals in the lodging side that they will govern, and we just want to be really streamlined with them on the process for the short-term renters. This does not at this time affect the existing current people that have a short-term rental. They'll continue as they always have, but after this ordinance is adopted with the rules and regulations, then they will be required to come into conformance with the ordinance. The main parts that the city will be looking at is more the nuisance side, the noise, parking, the density of it. The county will be handling more of the inside, the lodging side, so that's why we have to work together with them. So you'll be looking at things coming forward. When we do the ordinance, we will be inviting, not only will we be advertising that as a public hearing, but we'll also invite the existing VRBO that we are aware of to come to the meeting as well. So it's kind of, I wanted to explain a little bit more because I've had a few questions about it. I don't know, Warren, you were at the meeting, if you have anything additional to add.
You know, it's one of the things that the Planning Commission probably could have passed right away without the moratorium, but the density side of it is what we need to work out. Do we want, how many of these VRBOs do we want in a certain neighborhood? You know, we could end up up on Lake Shore Drive, who knows? We could end up with five to 10 properties all in a row that are nothing but VRBOs. That's probably an overkill, so we want to get that happy number where, you know, maybe one in this many households or whatever. So that's something that we've got to work on. And then also with the county not having theirs totally put together yet as far as requiring a lodging license. And then if I understand right, the lodging license will be, no one will be grandfathered in on that one, right?
With the county?
Yeah.
They have to, they'll have to obtain a license.
Right. If they're existing now, once the county has everything, they'll have to obtain. There's no, okay. Yep, that's why. So the reason why that's, Planning Commission went and decided to go with the moratorium for right now until the county gets everything set, and then we can look at density and make sure our noise and parking and everything else is onboard to cover it. So is there any other questions or concerns?
Just out of curiosity, how many known VRBOs do we have in town right now?
We have seven.
Seven?
Maybe eight.
It's hard to say. Until they go and get a license, we have no idea if they're doing it or not. So we got to start controlling it. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 814 establishing a one-year moratorium on short-term rentals?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Seven D, approve resolution 2022-70, approving variance.
The Planning Commission, acting as the Board of Adjustment, conducted a public hearing on Wednesday, August 10th, 4:30, to consider a variance request. The variance is for property owned by Dawn and Sarah Struss at 200 Elm Street South. The request is to allow, is to allow an addition to an attached garage at 6.17 feet from the corner side setback where 14.52 is required. Those numbers are a little odd because in our zoning code, if you have a substandard lot, the minimum corner side setback is 33% of the lot width. That's where the 14.52 came from. But approval will allow the construction of a 10-by-24 addition to the existing attached garage at the same setback as existing. The Planning Commission forwarded an approval recommendation, and I did include in your packet the aerial view showing what that addition will look like. And so we have in front of you, resolution 22-70, granting the variance to Dawn and Sarah Struss.
Questions? Concerns?
There are no issues with lot coverage?
No.
Okay.
Lot coverage, you can have up to 50%. When they come shy of that, it's basically the non-conforming lot. That makes it unique. That's the reason why the Planning Commission went with the variance. Any other questions? Concerns? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2022-70?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Sheldon.
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Seven E, approve pay request number four, 2022 Second Street Project.
So the fourth pay application has been received from CNL Excavating for the 2022 project. The total amount completed to date on this project is $2,465,000. We have paid to date 1.8 million, so we now have an amount due of this request of $549,478.54. And you have all the additional details in your packet.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve pay request number four?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Seven F, approve pay request number four, South Industrial Park Project.
Pay request number four has been received from Northern Line Contracting for the South Sock Center Industrial Park. This project completed to date, $2,083,000. We had previously paid 930,000, so the amount due this request is $1,484,98.52.
Fifty-two or forty-two?
Forty-two, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve pay request number four for Northern Lines?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Sheldon.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Seven G, approve execution of grant agreement with the DNR.
The Sock Center Fire Department has been awarded a grant from the State of Minnesota Forest Division for $2,000 to be used toward the purchase of radios and pagers and water movement equipment. This is a matching grant. Once the city has expended $4,000, it can request reimbursement for the $2,000. So what we're asking to do is to authorize the execution of the grant agreement.
Questions? Do I have a motion to authorize the execution of the grant agreement?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other comments? Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Or in favor, none against, one abstention. Seven H, approve resolution 2022-71, authorizing purchase of power cots.
On January 19th, the city council authorized the purchase of an ambulance. At that time, the purchase of the power cot was removed from the bid so that additional research and bidding for alternate cot styles could be completed. Bids have now been received from the one vendor that provides cots compatible with the ambulance. They're both from PSV. One is the fernal cot and one is the striker. After the trade, which was 4,500 on either cot, the net was for the fernal, $44,692, and for the striker, $52,591. So the recommendation is to approve resolution 2022-71, authorizing purchase of the power cot from PSV, the fernal, for $44,692.
Okay. Questions? Concerns?
Was it, go ahead.
Nope.
Was this one or two that, one cot?
Just one cot.
Okay.
Is this our oldest one?
It's for, whoever uses the guy, it's one of our oldest cots.
So will, are all of our cots power cots now? Yeah, sorry.
Okay. We have a, we have an alternate here.
No.
So what, yeah, I didn't get this one. I just had two on here. So what this is here is, Striker has also submitted a bid, their own cot, is that right? Lifeline Emergency Vehicles has submitted a bid, not PSV, I'm sorry, from Striker. And this is a different amount, $48,726.66, which is actually a little bit more. It was a recommendation. Do you have to explain what the recommendation is?
All right, so the ambulance service, we established a cot committee to look at two different cots. One is a Striker-style cot and one is a fernal cot. We already have a fernal cot, and we found some issues with the fernal-style cot, so we talked with other ambulance services and...
And this is a different amount, 48,726.66, which is actually a little bit more. There was a recommendation, you'll have to explain what the recommendation is.
All right, so the ambulance service, we established a cot committee to look at two different cots. One is a striker-style cot and one is a fernal cot. We already have a fernal cot, and we found some issues with the fernal-style cot, so we talked with other ambulance services and such, and the cot committee recommended to go with a striker-style cot for our new cot. We did get bids for both from PSV, and then an independent bid from a Stryker representative. And our recommendation, I apologize if Vicki did not get the email last Friday, was to go with the striker cot for 48,726.66. Answer your question, Councilwoman. We have all power cots. These are more self-lifting cots. You know, with our staffing issue, we're seeing a lot more, especially transfers, having to be with two staff members instead of three. We don't have to lift the cot up into the ambulance, it actually self-lifts itself into the ambulance. So a majority of the ambulances in the state, especially big ambulances, are going with a self-loading cot. So we decided several years ago that when we replace an ambulance, we're going to replace it with a self-loading cot. So that's what we're recommending now, is to go with the striker cot. If that makes sense?
Yep.
So is that $48,000, is that the final price, or is there still some sort of a trade on that as well, or?
That is including a trade-in of our, one of our old cots.
Okay. Did they give you a price on that trade-in?
Yeah, it was $2,500.
$2,500?
Yeah.
Okay. That's included in that price you gave us?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it kind of was a rush, because, two things. Number one, we just, we've been waiting since January to get our chassis for our new ambulance. They don't tell us when it is. It finally came in. So now we have to decide what cot we're gonna put in the ambulance. If we don't do it now, there's gonna be an upcharge, a change order in the, in the bid. And then if we go with a striker cot, there's a price increase of 9% going to be in effect on October 1st. So it's kind of a dual thing, and I apologize for the rush on this, but I just got this information early last week.
But these are on hand, so when, when, like, everything delivered and should match up with?
Yeah. And we can order it now, and it'll be actually be stored at, in Monticello into our ambulance that gets delivered there.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? What's the council's wishes?
I'd like to make a motion to, go ahead with the Lifeline from Stryker for the 48,000. Was it 726.66?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi. We have a second by Diane. Any other questions or comments? Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven I, approve scope of project amendment for Hickman Drive.
This is the, the project proposed change that Mr. West spoke of you at open forum. As you know, in 2014, we accepted a petition from the property owners joining Hickman, whose properties were off the end of the paved roadway, requesting that we pave the roadway past the properties. The owner on each side were assessed their share, so the city paid 50%, and each owner paid 25%. We're now proposing to reclaim it, as you know. The city policy would be to prorate and give credit to the landowner for the remaining useful life of the road, which in this case is 32 of 40 years. The landowners have requested that the city stop the reclaim where the new portion of roadway begins, rather than tear it up now and then again if and when the city needs to access the sewer manhole, which is located at the beginning of the portion in question. In addition, there's the curb that would need to be, that would need to be taken out to fix the curb. Due to the formed asphalt curb, we'd probably have to, at this time, do a sacrificial curb to direct water until which time we would do the full rebuild down the road. So it's a couple different issues. The landowners were assessed $1,862 in 2014. The new assessment is proposed 4,500, but then we would give 88% credit, actually, off the 1,862 toward that, so it'd get closer to the $3,000 as he had mentioned. So you have a couple options here. You can stop the reclaim at the point where the newer roadway surface begins. I remember when we're in the reclaiming and cutting and hauling over the top of that roadway, there will be some, probably some, likely to be some damage to that part of the roadway if we leave it in. And then the other option is to reclaim the road and grant credit for the remaining useful life. So we kind of have two options. We can stop at where we did before, where we started before, as he is requesting, or we can continue on as it was originally proposed in our project.
Questions, comments?
And Chuck is here to answer more questions on how that would work. I think part of the issue is the narrowing of the road, if you can see in the aerial that I showed you, how it narrows down.
Yeah, it narrows down to where it goes onto the gravel, right?
Pardon me?
It narrows down when you go to, onto the gravel.
Yes.
Anyone have anything?
So the credit that we'd be proposing is based on the original amount they were assessed and not the cost now based on the useful life?
What they're proposing is just to stop where the gravel used to end.
Yeah, that's what they're proposing.
That's what they're proposing. So that's one option. And the other option is to proceed with the project, of course, as it was proposed originally this year. And then they would automatically get a credit based on our policy. Whenever we redo something that somebody has paid for, they'll get a credit for the remaining useful life.
Off the original amount they were charged in 2014, though?
Yes.
Is there, is there a foreshadowed need or use to tear up that road when that road extends for the development of that field?
So it's, it's likely that we would have to tear it up again, because there would have to be grading issues to make the new road flow properly. So if we do it now, it's likely we'll have to redo it again if and when we do Hickman Drive, the gravel portion, simply to get the utilities and the curbing and the grading to all work. No, we don't know when that day is gonna be.
Right.
You know, it, it could be many years if we start developing into the south. It could be sooner than that, if somebody buys the north side of Hickman Road and petitions it. We just don't know that.
Okay. Well, and one of the first thoughts I had was, when he was speaking, I'm going, well, we could just stop at the new tar and go from there. Would make more sense, because there's no curb on either side of that. So then whenever we, that development does go in, then we gotta tear it out, the water and sewer underneath there, and curb and gutter it, and we'd be, like he said, tearing out three times.
And it's not only landowner, but that's cost the city as well. You know, 50% of that cost, so.
Yeah. So that's the first thing I thought of, was just stopping at the new tar. And yeah, we take a chance that it gets broke up a little bit, but who knows, in two years, we might be tearing it out anyway, or it could be 15 years.
And I can't imagine, Ryan, that there's a whole lot of traffic on that end of Hickman anyways, is there?
We have a lot of through traffic, we do, but not, not heavy construction.
The only way it's gonna get broke up is by them taking the reclaim out, I'm thinking. You know, depending on which end, if they're taking it out that far end, going out to County Road 11, or, yeah, that would be the only way it would get broke up, otherwise.
Yeah.
School buses and garage, and garbage trucks are about the only heaviest thing, I think, that I've ever seen on that road.
Yeah, there's not much else that comes there.
So there's the two options. What's the council's wishes?
You're, I guess I'll throw my, you're right, I feel like the best is to just stop where the new roadway begins, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Sheldon, seconded by Diane. One question, then, do we need, we'll end up doing a change order with the contractor, right, for that, to stop at that point?
That's such a small portion, we'll probably just mark it.
Okay.
And they'll end there.
All right. Any other questions or comments? And call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. We have no unfinished business, we have no new business, we have our consent agenda, schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $1,681,954.75 for a total of the same. July checks, paid claims payroll, $1,757,171.79. We have a request from Missy Terrace Doing Businesses Mustang Bar III Incorporated for a temporary extension of premise permit for anniversary and band on September 10th, 2022, in the back parking lot from 9:00 PM to 12:30 AM. And we have a request from Scott Kowski, representing the American Legion Post 67, for one temporary extension, a one-day temporary extension, outdoor liquor permit for the term of one day on October 1st, 2022, for a 5K run and DJ music in their north parking lot from noon to 10:00 PM. And also permission to block off Park Road from the boat landing to Main Street. Is there any questions about the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items?
Just a couple things. Again, the spectrum charter, channel, channel lineup changes, which are regularly on your agenda. And then a reminder that the city council budget workshop is August 31st at 5:00 PM.
Okay. Any questions about those two items?
Is anybody bringing pizza?
If not, we reached the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Heidi.
Sure.
Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.